We are going to audit criminals again. Let's go audit them. City council meeting. City council meeting. There's the attorney. Oh, he took his plate off the front. See, oh, here. Hey, Jody, how are you, dear? The city attorney took the, his plate off in the front. Hi, how are you? This is where you go in, yes. Everybody, welcome Becky Strattan, our new write-in candidate for city council seat. She's gonna come over and-
Write me in.
We're gonna write her in. The city attorney wanted to make a joke earlier about Debbie Gibson and Whitesnake or something, he said.
Oh, yeah?
Tried to be funny. I didn't have my camera on, I don't care.
No.
Yeah, he's not very funny. He's more of a criminal then. Honey, hi, Jody, thanks for coming in. Hey, share this out, thank you. Hey, Rami, good seeing you, buddy, thank you. I'll say hello real quick. Yep, we go right down here. Thanks, guys, for coming in. We are going down the long, open road of a, the Green Mile. I hope he's not here. I hope that guy's not here. That guy's a tough guy. Well, we're gonna find out how, yeah, come on over this way. This is where everybody gets to stand and find a seat anywhere you'd like, dear. It's good. Hey, Cindy, hi, sweetheart. How are ya? Good to see ya. Is it warm? They do that on purpose. They seed the rain and they also do it on purpose, you know. The criminals, dude. Hey, thanks for coming in, guys. Tobias, hey, good to see you, buddy. That was a great, great summer with you live. It was awesome. Oh, the criminals are talking, hold on, everybody. We gotta listen to criminals for a minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good to see you, Dexy. Hi. It's not posted anywhere here?
No.
Yeah, they don't do that here. They don't want anybody to know or show up.
Not even on the town, not gonna-
Wow, not even posted, did you hear that? Go figure. Bunch of criminals. Oh, sorry. I gotta be quiet. Good to see you, Dexy, Rami. Good to see you, brother, thank you. Joe, good to see you, thank you, thanks for coming.
Real hard in the last year.
Wasn't even posted anywhere, she said.
They received a real nice grant.
Thanks, guys.
So they are almost there with their funding. They're hoping to get that done here real quick. Those, those three girls have been working awful hard on getting that grant. Along with Linda here. I'll be with Dawn and Toby tomorrow. On a meeting on a grant, so we'll take care of that one.
I gotta clean my glasses, I'm old.
Definitions and responsibilities of planning and zoning. Cover all of that.
Okay, so there has been quite a few questions in the last several weeks on what planning and zoning can do. So I got from the handbook for planning commissions and land use from this fantastic code and it's titled 10, Chapter 98. These laws set forth the framework within which city governments, planning commissions, and zoning boards make decisions regarding land use, zoning, and development in municipalities. Here's a summary of the key rules and regulations. The general authority of municipalities, and this is Utah Code 10-98-101. Cities and towns in Utah are granted broad authority to regulate land use within your jurisdiction. This includes the power to establish zoning districts, regulate the use of land, controlled building heights, densities, and lot sizes, and manage subdivisions. Planning commissions, and this is in Utah Code 10-98-301 to 10-98-305. Cities must establish a planning commission to make recommendations on land use plans and zoning ordinances. Responsibilities, the commission is responsible for preparing and updating the city's general plan, which is a long-term policy document guiding development, zoning ordinances, and reviewing and making recommendations on specific applications like rezoning requests and renovations. Members are typically appointed by the city council and must meet certain eligibility criteria. And then I just copied the rules and regulations from ours and from our general plan. Our Land Use Development and Management Code went into effect-
Don't tell jokes, Rami. I do better jokes than you.
And this is our rules and regulations. The planning and zoning commissions shall adopt such rules and regulations governing its procedures as may be considered necessary or advisable and shall keep a record of its proceedings, which records shall be opened to inspection by the public at all reasonable times. The adopted rules and regulations shall be presented to the city council for their approval or disapproval. Only after the formal approval of the city council shall rules and regulations become enforceable. The planning and zoning commission shall carefully recommend the general plan and amend it to the general plan to the city council. And the general plan was presented and passed earlier in this year, in March. They also recommend zoning ordinances and amendments to zoning ordinances and acts to the city council. Administer provisions of the zoning ordinance where specifically provided-
Hey, Nova, good to see you, thank you, thank you for coming in, bro. Appreciate it.
Subdivision regulations and amendments to the regulations to the city council. They shall hear and decide through the laws and I have subdivision applications on subdivisions through the ten lots and make recommendations to amendments of subdivision plots and the vacation of subdivision plots. They shall hear and decide conditional use permits. They shall hear and decide non-conforming uses and non-compliant structures. They shall advise the city council on matters as the city council requests or directs. Hear and decide any matters that the city council designates, exercise any other powers that are necessary to enable it to perform its function or delegate to it, delegated to it by the city council that are required by state law including reviewing recommendations to the East Carbon City Council on matters regarding sale disposition or transfer of your property owned by East Carbon. In the general plan, it states that East Carbon City shall prepare and adopt a comprehensive, long-range general plan for the present and future needs of East Carbon City and the development of the land and growth within East Carbon City. The plan may provide for health, general welfare, safety, energy, conservation, transportation, storm drainage, prospect, parry, civic activities, and recreation, educational and cultural opportunities, the reduction of waste of physical, financial, or human resources that result from excessive congestion or excessive scattering of population, the efficient-
Nobody else is being played.
...use, conservation, and production of supply of food and water, and the drainage, sanitary, and other facilities and resources. The use of energy conservation and solar renewable energy resources, and the protection of urban development, open space, and environmental protection and promotion of air quality. The planning and zoning commission, with the approval of the city council, may determine the comprehensive extent and form of the general plan. And so I think with that, it gives us more of an idea of what rights that the planning and zoning commission have. And remember that all of these people are volunteers, they get absolutely nothing for any of this time to do it. And so I, for one, would like to thank them for all the work.
They do that on purpose.
As this said, they shall hear and decide-
I don't do-
-conditional use permits. And that is what happened when Terry Harrison went there. They heard and decided that he could have a conditional use permit. This is where the problem comes in. Conditional use permits are only good in residential areas for six months. And in commercial areas, they're good for one year. And so I don't think Terry wants to spend that kind of money for six months to put it in a container. It still has to come before council, council still has to have the discussion on it and vote, but they do have the right to give them a conditional use permit. But like I said, we've done that before, I've brought reports to council. It is usually used for when somebody is rebuilding a property, like up on the highway up there, we had the one, and residential is only for six months. And so I wanted to give those definitions and see if the council had any comments and questions on us.
There is a provision though in the adopted Land Use Development and Management Code underbearings that any person or entity desired a way for the modification of this-
Rami, thanks for coming in, brother. Mr. Ross, good, thank you. Thank you for coming in, hit the link button, everybody.
Where bearing from the terms of Land Use Development and Management Code, that is appealing to the people authorities, shall apply written notification to neighboring property that is within 300 feet of the subject property to the variance at the direction of the zoning administrator if required. The next section says the appeal of 38 grand variance only give, and I believe two would be most applicable to this. There are special circumstances attached to the property that do not generally apply to the properties in the same district. Mr. Harrison's property is the Lord's parcel of land on that. In that section of town, he has adequate room to install and permanently cover the container, and he's already made provisions to do so. See why it should be necessary to delay him.
So, just a minute here. So, our code does not allow for storage containers here, right? So, if you're going to grant that, so any request for a storage container has to first be presented as a request for a variance.
Right, and that's what-
And that has not been done, I mean, that was the planning and zoning. So it has to go to planning and zoning first, right, for the request for a variance, they make a recommendation. Am I right on the variance process, is that how you all understand it?
It sounds, it sounds to me that they shall hear and determine variance.
That's the attorney asking.
And I will-
But I don't think they've received a formal petition for the variance. Because there are certain criteria, they have to consider it based on certain criteria. And so, in my mind, I see Mr. Harrison's storage container is on the agenda today, but I don't think it's right for the, for the decision by you.
Thanks for having me, coming in, thanks, brother.
...to the planning commission with a formal written request for a variance.
So when, as a conditional use, right, Terry?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think that's what he really wanted. That's why I asked him, he wanted a non-conforming use and non-compliant structure.
So he has to go back to the planning and zoning with a request on the variance, and it has to be granted by the planning and zoning, and then it still comes back before the council.
I think the attorney's confused, he's not sure what he's doing here.
Well, they have to consider it based on-
I can't have one, can't have one.
...criteria for a variance. Like this, we're treating- There has to be something unique about that property that would say, okay, you can't put a shed up in your property here for- For some reason, you have to allow a storage container because it can't be allowed on. Something else that rights couldn't be allowed on.
I, I think that the, it is particular parcel of installation that it's not going to be an eyesore. It's going to be contained, not be able to be subject to vandalism or inhabitation.
We're really, yeah, we're putting the cart before the, you may be right. But for, for you to discuss it at this point is no offense, it's a kind of function that we really have to see first.
Yes, the planning of variance.
Yes.
And so-
Yeah.
If I am to this variance, am I still restricted to a six-month use? No.
No.
No, that's a conditional use. A variance would allow, if the council, if it comes before council and it is also approved by council, a variance would allow you to have the container. If you meet all the criteria that you're-
They wouldn't let me have my container, they'd take it and make it to me.
You're gonna have the openings, the air, everything to it, then you would be able to-
Suddenly, everybody wants containers.
Have that variance, to have it there. So, and I'm pretty sure-
They still need to come back to city council.
Council, yeah. I'm pretty sure their next meeting is the 13th.
Yeah, speak. Go ahead, tell us who you are.
Robert, I just have a question. I know the last meeting you asked for people to volunteer on planning and zoning, and I was wondering if those positions have been filled?
They have not, to my knowledge. As far as-
They don't want to get paid, they need paychecks.
...applications for those, and we will need to have those applications in so the planning and zoning can see them before the 13th to either approve or, and then the people will have to come to that meeting also.
Okay, two more quick questions regarding that. How do they face who they pick? Do you have to be experienced in planning and zoning to be?
Good heavens, I wish, but I could say I was experienced on it, we want it, but no.
So, so how's that, like-
No experience necessary.
How, how do you determine which person would be more-
So they're gonna interview each person that night, see what their experience is, see how much knowledge they have on planning and zoning and stuff, and then it'll be taken from there.
Okay, one more question. I noticed that the applications are an application for employers, which have some pretty deep questions that I can think of, personal questions. Like, is there not a volunteer sheet where you could actually fill out, I mean, if a person's volunteer and they're not being paid, so why would you have to fill out an application for an employer?
When I've seen those applications before, we really haven't made them do those parts. They just want their personal information on the front page. Where they live, how long they've lived here, that kind of information. We haven't required them to do the, all of that stuff for themselves.
Why don't we just make a form for volunteers for planning and zoning?
No, we have somebody make one, the volunteers, but I don't know what happened to it.
Their attorney's doing another job, he's not paying attention.
Yeah, I've seen those applications, and they're like, oh, yeah, I'm applying for a job.
Thanks for coming in, everybody.
Yeah, but if, I mean, that's the way we've always done this, is just take their personal information on the front. I don't think it changed anything, I think they're-
Dave's never changed anything, it's all the same, Dave has.
Christian, I have a question for you. Since this container appears in our land use order, if we were to come up with criteria-
Pretty interesting.
-for not a variance and not a conditional use, but criteria for permanent installation of one of these things in a manner that would not be an eyesore, we would have to amend the existing ordance and-
Ask, yeah, ask the ordinance.
Would that have, would that process have-
Good to see you, Bill, thank you.
...because they are kind of recommend, doing recommendations on that? And then, for rule?
I think so, but I think that's the same way, is they-
Start with them, and they're here.
Yeah, get their input from them. Because they, they can only recommend it or not recommend it. But they consider it through their, what, make your final recommendation in your name, and then you take it. You can pass it after a public hearing and make your own changes to it prior to passing it, sort of.
So it takes two public hearings to finally amend or bring how it is in the first place? So we had to get the ordinance out then, have a public hearing for planning and zoning, have them pass the planning and zoning, then planning and zoning go on it. Then it has to come here, we have to have a public meeting here, and then we sort of put it on it as a council, so.
Is it okay to that point?
I think so.
Sherry Quinn, for the right. I just wanted to know how many people you need for the planning and zoning, how many numbers are you looking at?
Two.
Okay. And I turn my sheet in, my byword.
Two more, right? Which makes a pool of love.
So we have seven, yeah. We have-
He's trying to figure out math.
...and Bob, that are full-time and they're there all the time, and then we have one that is there part-time. And then we're supposed to have two to three alternates that are gonna be there to fill in, so we have four there all the time. I can only short-
They're doing some math now. There's the criminal attorney.
For the process for amending our, our land use code, our development code, is-
Thanks, brother.
...to Section 10-98-502. And Barbara is correct, we have to give notice for the public hearing, hold the public hearing. And with the planning commission, planning commission makes a vote as to whether to recommend or not recommend its passage. It goes up to the-
That's the criminal city attorney.
...to then do the same thing.
Christian Reiner. Fucking attorney.
In that statute, so Barbara's exactly-
Big time criminal.
But if anybody wanted to read that, that's where it details. And then the, it looks like you're-
No, this is, this is the actual city attorney, the city attorney. These criminals, right?
305 follows, 10-98-205. I have to be careful before I calculate how much time that is.
Six, fourteen minutes, I mean.
We have in here, we've seen 10A's.
Good to see you, Bill, thanks.
But it references some other sections as well, so we have to look at it closely and make sure.
And that's for the public hearing within planning and zoning.
And, yeah, and the public hearing for council, and that's with respect to-
Yes, it's very embarrassing.
That's not with respect to a petition.
It's not, no.
That's with respect to if you wanted to amend it forward. Yeah, if you wanted to change ordinance to make it a permitted use to have a very forbidden or modified storage container, that's a process you would have to follow if you wanted to make that obtain in some manner or fashion. And a petition for a variance would just come before the planning commission, basically, would be heard, you know, that they're previous tenants.
Go ahead, Terry. Since I'm on the agenda, I'll go ahead and surrender my spot on that. And I'll wait until the planning and zoning makes an ordinance that's reasonable and can be accepted before I ever apply for a right of variance. That way it's on the record tonight.
What's your timing here, Terry? Are we behind right now?
No.
We're okay?
Yeah, I've got plenty of time.
All right.
So I've got time to wait until the ordinance is amended or passed or whatever. And then I'll read the ordinance, and then I'll go ahead and apply my variance to that if need be, and then go from there.
There's your changes you need to make, in writing on that? I was, the only thing that I can say about this, I know that we were contemplating changes to it, and there was a lot of really good public input as far as how to regulate a permanent installation on one, to where there would be a permit process that there might be some sort of refundable deposit upon completion of the permanent work to make it where it is pleasing to the eye or installed correctly in such way that it's safe, secure, everything else. But it, I think the only one in consensus is that this is an incredibly economical way to have a very secure storage area on an appropriately sized lot, as long as it doesn't detract from the visual of the neighborhood and the lot that it's on.
Made me get rid of my storage container, all my business. They find me, take me, I was in court for months.
...in this point of installation or it needs to be driven. And so- Where do you at?
Well, I think that's change, or- It's only up to you, I will have a voice in it. If you want me to work on a draft ordinance presented to city council, I'm happy to work with any of you on the board to prepare such an ordinance.
Suddenly wants to work, the city attorney. Criminal city attorney.
Well, I, I think the planning commission has to consider, see, in most places, the building or planning director, the zoning administrator, would write it and then present it to the planning commission. The planning commission would usually not write it itself.
I think it's been worked on.
I was gonna say, we have a pretty good framework that's been borrowed from Green River, I believe, that needs some, a little bit of changing and molding to fit specifically our area, our lot sizes. Just some of the wording needs to be brushed up, but it's a really good beginning framework.
So what you as a city council could do is-
Resign, resign. We need to resign.
...such an ordinance to the city council. And nominate somebody on, or to the planning, to nominate someone on city council here to take that to them for their consideration. If you want-
For money, of course.
Somebody's already done that. I mean, planning and zoning sets their own agenda, but you could not-
Rami Corrigan, good to see you.
...ask that to get on there.
Well, since I know we're planning and zoning, and I know that Jesse has already been working on this, I think it's taken care of already.
I can continue to work for the planning and zoning on that.
I guess Mr. Harrison, Dr. Dolph, is somebody gonna bring the petition in to the, is somebody gonna bring the draft ordinance?
I will work on it and I will take my final draft to planning and zoning. One to public input that I've had to this point, as well as specific things that apply to this community. Now, that's changed to an ordinance, does that need to come through us first?
If, if they're planning and zoning, they'll have a public hearing on it.
That's the mayor asking that question.
Then they'll send it to you. You'll have a public hearing on it, and then you can make those changes if you want, and then finally pass it to the authorities. It has to start with planning and zoning.
Okay, are you okay? Don't see a-
Yes, if we're okay. Are we okay?
Uh, Terry, you're okay?
I'm okay.
Terry's okay.
Move right along then.
Terry's alright.
Um, Lloyd?
Yeah, I wanted to address about the city council, and last time I met with you guys, we talked about the decision to have our water, our lake, should I say, worked upon by an underwater welder to stop the silt and such from getting in from the magnees and such. Um, I brought along with you, brought along with me with, uh, with my distiller. And I'm sorry to say, I'm really kind of worried about what you guys have gotten done and what hasn't been done. Because, I mean, this is terrible, and I think that we need to figure out really a little bit more about what more options are than we have. Um, I've come together with a few grants that we could file for. Um, some, one's even a nonprofit, so I'm just wondering, uh, what steps that we could proceed forward to addressing still having these problems. I mean, my water stains, I'm sure everybody else here has the same problem.
Brand new water plant, millions of dollars, brand new.
What, what can we do from this point forward to address the problem, you know, fixing the straw?
We have no idea what they're doing.
And, um, maybe even, uh, fixing, um, the dam so that we don't have to remove the silt from underneath the pond or the lake itself, and just-
Maybe they should know what to do.
So, um, I know that we have, uh, we own rights to Range Creek. And so I'm still wondering where it is that we stand on move further development besides the treatment plan.
See, well, our engineers-
He can't answer it.
-have the draft information to make modifications to the reservoir. So that's where that's at.
Squirrel.
Did we ever get the welder down there to put the caps on the side, uh, in pole of the straw?
Oh yeah.
And we're still getting that by?
That's, that's been raised by five feet.
Really? Okay, alright, that's good to know. Um, so what, um, basically what I'm getting at is what's our next order process to where we're not having stinky water and contaminant?
Pray for snow and rain.
Why not go to Range Creek? There's no water.
No water, rain, the weather in Range Creek, they drop like us.
So it flows your ground, but yeah, they're, they're out.
Without a dam in Range Creek, you ain't got anything.
That's what I'm getting at, right? So that's the, that's the only, I mean, we ain't got groundwater, nothing else we pull up, I mean, gosh, I worked for the power plant for how long? And they have a water system.
Thanks for coming in guys, so why can't we pull up groundwater?
The state would not let us put it over the top of the dam and let it go down the creek.
Yeah.
Plus, the money.
We're on catch twenty-two.
So that's what I mean about some people are saying we haven't done much.
But the water that the line is taking is not clean water.
That's what.
That has copper in it, it has salt plate, that's why they're getting that water down deep.
Manganees.
Okay, so but that's only, no matter how well you put that lake, you're gonna have the same amount of footage of water, no matter what you do.
We're starting with the problem, what are we gonna do with that water?
I mean, you can't muck it up.
What I'm wondering is what is the next step?
Pray.
We can't muck it up. I mean, we can only do so much. You wanna feel better?
Uh, anyway, uh, so I just had a question if we're if we're struggling this side of water, so we have a period in December. So I'm not, like, we're still trying to get understanding this water issue. I was the one who commented and asked if we had water rights that were that we passed up because I wasn't sure and that's what we had been told. I took accountability for that, but my question is, why are we still allowing people to water outside and water their yards for this in need of water? Like, let's cut off the water outside and let's save it for people who need to shower, people who need to whatever, wash their dishes, wash their laundry, things like this, like, let's shut off the water outside. Your grass will come back. We can fix the grass and water later, but I've got a shower. My kids have got a shower, you know what I mean? So I just wanna know, like, why are we still using water outside when we can just?
And if we have a ranch creek, why aren't we using it if we own the right?
People have gardeners to feed their families with.
One thing, we don't have the money to put, uh, bring the water from Ranger Creek over to.
We could buy whatever we actually have to do so.
Okay.
That grass, that grass don't work.
So we got two, you got one nonprofit, N R P A, which is one that helps really hard when it comes to recreational parks. If we build a new reservoir out there, we can fill up the range creek with our water if we want, while it's flowing, which I believe it's flowing right now. But, uh, I'm just wondering, why, why can't we go that route? Is this just, is that all we're gonna say? Is there any water? Cause I woke up there right now and we'll get a sample and bring it back.
There's not much, which Jeanne Jensen told me the other day, the range creek is some places pools, it's not running all the way out. The, the drought in there is like in here. And plus, we talked about grants, grants, grants. Do you know how many billions of dollars you would have to do to have to get?
Yeah, I got.
Most of them grants are matching grants, they're not free.
Uh, no, actually, the Utah Outdoor Recreational Grant is actually free.
You think they're gonna do?
Yeah, actually, the whole thing is.
Well, not for them, not for them to steal.
Such as this, to bring it towards them and to help with, uh, municipals and.
It sounds good.
Sir, we are not, we have this problem against, um, State of Utah. Grants.
But yeah, I see his grass is green, I see his grass is green, I see her grass is green.
Thanks for coming in, I appreciate it, brother, thank you.
Do you save your dishwater?
Yeah, actually, I use it on my grass.
Do you save your shower water?
I use it on my grass.
Do you shave, save your, your laundry water?
I love to collect rainwater, unfortunately, we only wash once a month.
We don't water every time we're on the water.
That's the problem, it's like, we, we, we ask you, but it's like, people like him.
There's a lot of grants, but that doesn't mean that we don't receive a grant. Um, there's a lot of other cities apply for those grants.
Right.
And we both have applied for grants. We were not just sitting here going, oh well, we don't have water.
And we're working on it once a month.
Guys just told me to pray.
Told you that a few minutes ago.
You guys just told me to pray. I mean, what does that hurt about for an extra two grants?
Okay.
They don't want it. They don't want it well, they just don't want it well. They don't want it. This guy's fed up and walked out.
We're honored to our G O N R V R T S. Spent last week just wondering about animal ordinance. How many you can have at any property address itself, not how many people can have each one at each house. And was wondering what maybe the ordinance are because it seems like a lot of it's just run fuck.
Three dogs per residence.
And per residence is three dogs, not three dogs per person, per residence.
So how do you control that?
Well, we can by issuing citations and then.
Ticket terrorism.
If we're lucky.
Ticket terrorism, this guy right here.
They reduce the number of dogs or you just keep after them, the citation after citation until they remind them when I'm down the number of dogs they have.
Okay, we've had the house about fifteen years. We just barely, I retired in January.
Plus, good to see you, thank you, thanks for coming in.
When we came down in January making the plan for getting the house in order to move all the furniture down here at the end of February, the house behind me had nineteen dogs.
Justin, hey, Justin, come on, brother.
Now they have, they still have four. They're always outside. I'm just asking.
Welcome, Justin Garth.
We redressed at due court and we actually did get a court order to have them remove the majority.
They're tracing the house. Which residents?
Send everybody from out over here.
They signed a time, a time, a time for multiple dogs and then just finally get ordered that I was about to read it seven or eight. They did get down to three. If they've gone a fourth.
Now they've been down, they're, they're willing to get down to four. I can name them if you want. There's a little, there's two, there's two golden labs, a black lab, and one from the Denver Street Puppy Mill. Like the brown, black Chihuahua. Everybody's having fun, seeing everybody else.
My Chihuahua was white, I have a white one.
So, I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to figure out if we have an ordinance.
Oh, we do.
If we can go, because we go out and we go out to work in our backyard and these dogs virtually attack us at the fence. You can't even get within two foot of the fence. And none of the dogs seem to have licenses, which there's another form of revenue, I believe. Everything is revenue, so.
Everything is revenue. Everything, he said it right, everything is revenue.
Where I come from, they don't take license.
Cause of this guy.
We're not, we're not requiring people to have a collar with a license on it.
Yes, we do, but I don't know if you said the collar, with the collar?
Yep.
Uh, they don't even know, look, collars, licenses, they're not even sure.
I mean, that's all I had is, is there any way, I mean, I, I've seen enforcement come by, I've seen the dogs run out, four of them at the fence barking at them. Nothing happens. I, I love, I'm just, I'm trying to get the situation where I live fixed. I mean, I wanna work in my backyard, I wanna go by the shed next to the fence and not worry about it sticking its nose through fence, bite my arm.
Yeah, this is the only problem listed in your backyard. This is the problem.
Right, there is a problem.
And I mean, I, I called, um, Mr. Patoff and asked him about the animal shelter. He was told we can't take animals to the animal shelter because.
Thanks for coming in, everybody. Smash the like button.
And he said that is true, um, because there's just so many dogs there from everywhere, so everybody's out the same.
Right, we've actually made significant headway on that, we're gonna discuss it later. Today we were.
Like, they first.
Go ahead.
So in order to change, there must be consequences. And that's what he said.
In order to change, there must be consequences, remember that.
He did have an idea.
In order to change, there must be consequences.
That we contact the kennel and have them, um, be a holding facility, because we don't have dogs here, we don't have the animal shelter. And the, you know, the giving fines and citations are not working because we still have an animal.
Bunch of criminals.
And so, uh, what he, what he suggested is that the kennel have them be in a holding facility and the people that, who's ever dog is, they pay and.
Hey, thanks for coming in, Shannon, happy to see you, brother.
Thank you. Anyway, there, there are some resolutions, we just need to look and find out what we can do.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not looking for a, a quick fix tonight. Obviously, this problem's been a little while. Well, so, but if we could keep after it, that would prob, that would probably help the whole town.
Well, and, and as I was saying, just today, uh, the animal control officer and I responded to a call about some animals we're asking a lot of livestock. Um, we located the animals, we were already thinking a little outside of the box as far as how to mitigate the problem. And when we made contact with the owners, it did help that last night I checked the shared master offenses table. It tells the penalties for each one of these animal control violations. The minimum on our animal control violations is two hundred and sixty dollars. The highest one is six hundred and ninety dollars, and that's just animal.
Ticket terrorism.
We were able to use that information because I issued these same people a citation last night. And I issued them a citation one week. And when we located and identified the dogs, we proposed a solution to them. Either we can issue you a citation because your animals were attacking livestock, so we could articulate that they were just.
They probably were biting a couple of them.
They're not licensed, they're not vaccinated, they were running a large, and you have too many animals. So do you want to pay a one thousand eight hundred dollar ticket because that's roughly what it would be paid to? Or would you voluntarily surrender the dogs so we can get them taken care of at the animal shelter? Get them cleaned up, ready for adoption by someone who will take care of them. And we had four dogs voluntarily surrendered to us, we transported them to part of the animal shelter, three of which are already up for adoption and one.
The city attorney, look, he's young, he's not doing shit.
And beyond that, we're also going to start trying to catch the animals if they are out in free range. And Mary's worked very, very hard on making a good relationship with the person who is newly over Carbon County Animal Shelter.
Just take terrorism.
That we had our own animal ticket up until she took over.
Okay.
So that was one reason we weren't taking animals down here because all the staff thought that we had our own animal shelter. They're also working on getting ability with the Humane Society that we can trap and transport feral cats, where veterinarians will fix them and we return them to the area where they cannot breed, but they're still maintained.
There are some feral pigs in this area too, feral pigs.
Be humane. And like I said, last night I issued a citation that has twenty-five counts of violations to one owner whose four dogs were. And by the time I was done with the citation, there were twenty-five charges on that because I charged him with every single thing that I could think of. And that was one of the owners that surrendered their dog to me because they're already facing crap.
Right.
In court.
Okay.
And so.
Ticket terrorism.
It's my opinion, it's Mary's opinion, and I believe it's the rest of the police department's opinion. We're absolutely sick to death of this ongoing problem. We feel just like you. And if we have to be ultra aggressive as far as enforcement, that's what we're gonna have to do because the problem's not fixing itself. And simply issuing a citation without offering.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Of other resolutions that's not leading up to this point.
Good.
So if we can confront them with, this is the accountability you will face. Or option B, we can surrender the dog and a responsible dog owner who adopted and have it and love it and is going to a good home, which would you rather?
Can a judge, can a judge order that they be neutered?
Once they go to the shelter, once they're surrendered to us, the, the prospective adopt, adoptee or adopter has to sign a contract that within six months that proof will be brought back to the shelter that they have been sterilized.
I think the judge can only order the pigs to be neutered.
Even if they do come back to our community.
I'm not sure on that, I'll have to check the law.
So we're thinking outside of the box and I think we're coming up on some pretty good ways of handling it.
Okay, I, I definitely appreciate it.
So I have my question for you.
Yes.
So how old is the puppy from the puppy mill? Because our ordinance says under six months, they don't have to have a license.
Yeah, no, these are, these are, these are no longer dogs. These, these are dogs, he talked about these, these are dogs. So, I'm just using a puppy mill as general people.
There are a bunch of criminals in here, sorry. Bunch of criminals. They've either surrendered or dead. All they talk about is nonsense. No business is dog tickets, fucking, uh, brand new water plant screwed up. That's all screwed up now. They won't act like they're doing shit again. He appreciates everything. I don't appreciate the big little, bunch of criminals.
Like I told these people today and told Mary, if we have to take them down one at a time, if we've got the open door
Yeah.
Down there at the shelter, we'll take them down every time we can get hands on them and give them our trust.
There are animals that were attacked and thrown after people as well, not all the time, so.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Come back next week, next meeting, huh?
Okay, okay. All right, I wanna compliment you and your wife on the dog you've done with the house down there. Oh, fine.
It's a compliment.
And, and I'm only gonna say one thing straight up, okay? We've had the house for fifteen years and I've paid a water bill for fifteen years without even living there. So, and I have grass, I deserve grass. There's, you know, there's ways you can keep your grass green. If I want to get tanks, I'll go get tanks, but I, I, I spent a ton of money on water that I didn't drink, didn't flush, didn't bathe, didn't log. But I appreciate it, thank you very much.
If you need a water tank, I got one.
Okay, well, you live close to it.
Brad, it looks like you're here.
I'm here, you're ready for me?
Come on up.
On a lighter note, it's not dogs or water.
Thank you.
I'm gonna address, try and address everyone, I'm starting my backs to you, even though I know I need to address the mayor, the council. My name is Brad Watson, I'm working at the FIBI University Eastern. And I was asked, your Jared Hough, to come and present this in a few minutes about something called Eastern Leaders Academy. Um, let me ask this question first, who's heard of Eastern Leaders Academy, raise your hand. Not surprised by that at all, okay, glad to know that.
Isn't that what Kim did?
That's exactly right. Eastern Leaders Academy was established three years ago, and let me give you some whys before I explain what it is. Two major whys of why Eastern Leaders Academy was formed. One is our county and, and Emery County as well are really the tipping points. There are major things and major decisions that have to happen in order to be able to move forward and be successful for the future. And so, we don't have leaders in the right place at the right time, we're all hurt. And the second reason we're focusing on this happening is because we've seen in other counties and other states across the United States in very rural areas, a lot of infighting and a lot of problems in rural communities that we don't want to face here in our county and Emery County as well. The more we can work together, the better we can be as we solve these challenges for the future. So, three years ago, the governor gave us a grant for Eastern Leaders Academy. Eastern Leaders Academy is designed for emerging and leaders in the rural community, but especially for emerging leaders. There are four purposes that we have in Eastern Leaders Academy. One is we want the participants in Eastern Leaders Academy to understand the complex issues that we're facing in our area. The water conversation that you just had makes that point. There are complex things that we're facing, and there is no answer to these complex issues. And so the participants in Eastern Leaders Academy, we try hard to put them in front of the right people so that they can understand some of these complexities. If you go on Facebook and look for answers, you're not gonna find it. The complex answer is gonna come by talking to the right people who have the right information, that can work together, that are visionary and are willing to unite, but think differently. So that's the first thing we believe in Eastern Academy. The second is we try to help Eastern Leaders Academy establish high level connections. We need them to know who the decision makers are in our community, whether that's business leaders or government leaders, civic leaders. We want them to know who those people are. We also want participants in Eastern Leaders Academy to understand some leadership principles that will be helpful to them as they work in whatever it is they're gonna do in the future. And lastly, we want them to identify personal leadership qualities that they have, that they can be successful at. I may have different qualities that you have, yours are as valuable as mine, but if you don't understand differences and what the best qualities we have to each other, it's gonna be hard to move forward. Eastern Leaders Academy happens nine months out of the year, from September to May. And each, on each of those months, one day of the month, we ask participants to give us a whole day for Eastern Leaders Academy. From eight thirty A M. until five P M. we have participants in Eastern Leaders Academy. And we spin that day around a theme. Some of our themes are economic growth and development, community health and wellness, education, birth to career. And during that day, we go places in our county where we're seeing great things happen. We're going places where there are decision makers who are telling us about what they're doing and the complexities that they have to deal with for that whole day. Now, you may wonder how many people can participate in Eastern Leaders Academy a year. We started with a grant, that grant has now ended, and so funding is even tighter than it was before. And so fourteen participants a year participate in Eastern Leaders Academy. We have an application process.
But I'm a law meter this year.
E L A, Eastern Leaders Academy, I'm just gonna start using that acronym, E L A. So, um, we ask people to apply for Eastern Leaders Academy. Anybody can apply that would, that would like to. We have them answer some questions as a part of that application process. And that really matters to the board who chooses those people who participate in Eastern Leaders Academy. This past year, this past July, we had thirty-six people apply to Eastern Leaders Academy. And we, we could only choose fourteen of that thirty-six. So we really look closely at what those people are telling us and, and the answers that they give us in those questions. We have to fund this in some way. The college can't pay for everything.
They need the funding, everyone still, everybody needs funding.
Now doing to higher education in the state of Utah. And so, where people can, participants, we hope that their organizations, their businesses will sponsor them in E L A. Because the tools and things we give to them will help them wherever they work. Both, uh, where they work and then wherever they're gonna help in the future, wherever they choose to help. And so, the, the, the sponsorship fee is fifteen hundred dollars a participant for Eastern Leaders Academy, which is not a cheap amount. But we find many businesses and organizations are willing to pay that amount because of the skills and the opportunities that participants get as a part of E L A throughout this yearly experience. Let me highlight two more things and then I'll take questions if you have any about Eastern Leaders Academy. Um, in the month of October, we take participants down to One Utah Summit South. They see, I don't know if you're familiar with that, with that summit, but it's put on by the governor and his staff at Southern Utah University. And it's a fantastic experience. There are high level leaders in our state that are at, um, One Utah Summit. Two years ago, I was there, the governor is always there, and his, his wife is, it's fantastic being able to see them and meet with him. Two years ago, some of them made out with the football player, Steve Young, he was one of the people that was at One Utah Summit South. And the big business leaders that are a part of the state of Utah are, are a part of that. That's a, that's a two day experience, and in fact, this year in October, it'll be a three day experience for, for E L A. One last thing, in February, we have a two day experience where I take participants up to the state Capitol while the legislature is in session. We visit the state Capitol, and this is not just a field trip like you get in third grade, we're behind the scenes, we're having tours and conversations with legislators. Last year, the governor met with Eastern Leaders Academy and a couple other Leaders Academy, um, so it was a group of about forty-five people that met with the governor last year. So, again, making high level connections is one of the goals of, of Eastern Leaders Academy. Um, let me say lastly, that when this opportunity first came to me to be a part of standing up Eastern Leaders Academy, it came as a job assignment, it came as my supervisor saying.
Everyone does that, every time it says Eastern Leaders Academy.
I want you to do it. What has become for me personally is something much more than that. It is so important that we have people prepared to take on complex issues. And if they're not prepared and they rely on Facebook, we're gonna go nowhere. So it's very important to.
It's a Facebook question.
So thank you very much, I'm happy to take any questions if you have any of me at this time.
I'll try to find fifteen hundred dollars.
Please apply next year, we would love to have you. I should've said the application process starts in July, the first of July.
I'm sure he'll come up with fifteen hundred dollars, sure he will.
And so, this year, we're full.
Bunch of criminals.
People applying, but if somebody from the city wanted to come and you're willing to do fifteen hundred dollars or get yourself here, we would love.
Let's see what we can do. And we've al, I've already had an earful before you got here, so it's, it's been, it's out there, so.
Great.
Oh, it's out there.
How do we get the word out to people because we have no, I mean, obviously, nobody else knows about it, there were a few.
Yeah, I would.
Facebook.
Well, the, the word is out because we had so many people apply for fourteen positions, I'm sorry it's not come to East Carbon the way that it should.
You didn't, you didn't put it on Facebook.
We did not put it on Facebook. Actually, through U T State University.
Holy moly, uh. Poor dark trial.
But it wasn't that kind of error for it to be. The first couple of years, we did marketing, I went to the Chamber of Commerce, the Carver County Chamber of Commerce, one years, and spoke to that group. A large number of participants came through that. There have been newspaper articles and newspaper news in the past couple of years.
It's like, oh, it's like.
Tried some ways to be able to get the word out, and I, but I apologize that it hasn't come to East Carbon as needed, because that's a, that's a valid.
You think the number of participants will go up? You're at fourteen, you say?
Fourteen, well.
It's likely the, the number of indictments.
To be able to run this.
Don't talk to me about money.
Somebody mentioned revenue earlier, yeah, I like that.
The number of indictments.
If, if I had my druthers and we, we could have more money to be able to run, uh, to have more participants, I would love to get to twenty.
Hot again, thanks, brother, good to see you, thanks for coming in.
Questions are great, but there are other questions.
Appreciate it. Great work, I love your channel.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. And all the best to you on these, these really challenging issues that we're facing. Thank you all of you.
Have any way to solve any of those problems?
I'll give you the silver bullet. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
I need to be somewhere else, so please excuse me, I apologize if I have.
All right.
Is this your phone?
This is my phone, thank you very much.
Yeah, well, I've gotta find the money first.
Can I give you, can I please hand this hand that I have in the other hand to the writers, please, so you have additional information? It'll be the website where you want to go to and all kinds of information in there. So, I appreciate you looking for them in America, thank you.
Oh, yes. Yes, let me, uh, look for some money and then we'll go.
So is, is money for this year's conference?
When did you say it started?
It would have to be for twenty twenty-six. The fourteen applicants have already been decided. The fourteen applicants have already been decided for this year. And it started, in essence, for this year. So, it would be next fiscal year that it would start, that the applications would be available again.
How was the money for this year funded, from the grant?
Yes, from money from the grant and money from the college primarily.
But next year, we're basically on our own?
Yes.
Okay.
We are on our own this year, truthfully.
All right.
Yeah.
We can't do anything about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gotta fire them all.
I'm just gonna, my concerns for the city, I've been on a while here. Reports from council, what were on the map?
I think we've already covered planning in Zoni. I had also asked us to put on here about the report for the overtime. And since you were on...
They don't smile here, it's a bunch of criminals.
And so, I request you know again.
That's a good joke, though, by the way. Don't smile very much.
You had made a comment to me, what was I gonna do if you didn't give me the report? And so, I did contact...
They break the law here, dude.
Todd Godfrey, the lawyer for the League of Cities and Towns. And regarding overtime reports, you would need to review our ordinances to know the answer to that question. However, I do know the books and records of the city, including all financial records, are open and public records, and council members have a right to review those records. On an obligation to create and provide specific reports, you need to consult the city attorney. There is no specific direction in state-wise to the office that has the responsibility...
He breaks the law, too.
For financial reports to the council. And then he states again, however, they are open and public records, and the council members have a right to review those records. And so, again, we have a right to those records and to see a report.
Residents do, too.
And so, as far as planning in Zoni, we've already talked about everything in planning in Zoni. If anybody has any other questions on planning in Zoni, I'll be happy to answer that.
Thanks, Bill.
That's all I have.
Mary?
Barbara, I have a question. You said the next planning in Zoni meeting was on the fourteenth?
I think so.
Do you realize that is a Saturday?
I think it's the tenth.
It's the tenth, sorry. The tenth?
Yes.
Okay.
They mix up a lot of stuff here.
I didn't read my calendar, too.
Okay.
There's nothing.
All right.
I have too many other meetings.
That's our one, the same spark.
Hey, it's the biggest nightmare, there we go.
Hey, Dom? You know, I wanted to go through all this again, but the way it printed out, it's a nightmare. And I don't know...
God, that's a nightmare.
...if they could follow along. I sent, I hope you all got it, the website information from Rice and from Wellington, but Helper doesn't have any on their website a new week. So, if it's okay with you guys, maybe we can try to get this printed again.
They don't know what they're doing, obviously. Some of the ordinance weren't even done in twenty-five, thirty years.
So, other than that, that's all I have. Liz?
I'm the one that's changed all of it by filming these people. I'm the one that brought change, me. You're welcome. Mr. Mayor. You're welcome. Mr. Attorney.
Send to everyone, I just decided. We're doing these, I'm so desperate to see those. We can have it. If you have anything that you want in, send it to me. I was sending candidates out to everybody like three times a month, but everyone knows that it's...
This lady got arrested at the bank. It was a bank heist or something. The branch manager got arrested. She got arrested.
Several people have heard about the motion that was being made for the TAC conference.
Tell that story.
City Council meeting, and why I...
This lady's criminal, too.
So, obviously, please, my opposition was that... I opposed because it was for Sammy and Mary.
I'm not scared.
Sammy and Mary opposed. Mary is not a law enforcement officer, and that's what I... She was hired as a code performance worker and an animal control. And I don't know where she became the secretary for the law enforcement. So, that was my opposition. And I don't know if she is a secretary now or if she's...
Holy moly.
So, I did go and talk to Sandy about this quite extensively. And he...
Oh, my God.
Only what TAC was.
Can you believe that?
We're leaning for it. And you've all been around to hear all of the complaints that we have had on the new radio systems and the final takes. Well, up until these new radios were going into effect, Lillian had dispatched to care of all of the TAC. And what TAC is, is it's a report that has to be done every morning and turned into the FBI. Every time that a police officer calls to run a license plate, a license, a person's name...
That's not true.
Anything that makes a record. And then the next morning has to be justified to the FBI for why that was done. And so, Mary, because she's here five days a week...
She's a fraud.
...become the second person over the TAC. Sammy is the first, Sammy does not work.
Sammy does not work. Sammy does not work, she said.
Takes this report on and does it in mornings.
Hundred fifty grand, dude, nothing.
Twenty minutes, Sammy says. And that way, they're not having to have, pay Sammy to come in and pay overtime to do that report for the days he's off. Or have another officer have to come in and pay overtime for those days that they're off.
This is unbelievable here in this shit.
Is doing that. They do have to go to training every year to do...
Get the face. We have no idea what to say.
I know what's been planned myself.
They're scared of these people, that's what they are, they're scared of them.
She was hired as a secretary for the peace department. And that's basically what it did.
I'm not scared of these criminals.
Performance worker and animal control. And so...
I think she was hired to help out...
She thinks she was hired?
No.
She thinks... Look, they don't even know it was on her, look. Look, they have no idea what she's doing. Look. Look.
And we didn't know that she was being hired.
They have no idea what she's doing.
Everybody voted on it?
Holy shit.
I don't think so, I think we were all here.
They have no idea what they're doing.
I voted as a secretary position, I only wish, because there's a lot of people that I could do without them. But she is the one who our accountability rests with.
Oh, my God. Wait till I clip that.
Criteria that each one of those users has to meet. She is the one who administers the test, even to Sam, to make sure that he still meets the criteria for utilizing those systems. And every single thing that we've run, we are accountable for. If I run a family member, I'd be extraordinarily prepared to explain to the FBI why I run that.
And I get all that, but I don't get this, when can she be done?
The way it goes from my foreb, where I access it, all the way to the FBI is it goes through her. And she's actually in a great position to do it. She's impartial to the police department, as you said. She's not an officer. And it's a new responsibility that Sam felt that she would be great for because she is Monday through Friday, and they prepare the reports when they're required without having to pay someone for that.
Well, you were just wrong with that.
They obviously have no idea what they're doing.
So, the first thing she was hired for was TAC, overtime. And then we just rolled into it. She's been at the conference.
This is the Ticketmaster lady, ticket terrorism.
And then, we talked about the cleanup again, like, yeah, you know, Kristen. I talked about how it's nasty. Can I ask if you could check on that?
How embarrassing.
I don't know where you're at, the process, or how many days have elapsed with Mary, you were talking about. She's been held accountable.
Did you hear what she said? She has accountable.
And you didn't have to, actually, I have called in there a few nights ago. And so, the life of TAC...
That's all I have.
That's all they have.
Quick. Okay, quick. The house has been running... You ready, Blackburn?
I know what you're describing.
Anyways, the house has been vacant, crushed through for about two and a half years after that raid. You guys did with Pricey, the police, and Helper, all that stuff. We've got people moving in there now. Pissing on top of it, forgets any worse, because I see it going bad. And they just started moving in. Last night at one o'clock in the morning, making all kinds of noise. Drive back trailers in, load junk, everything else. Okay, excuse me, knocked down, but house hold merchandise, so...
I've already got a roadmap for that one.
Okay, so...
I was hoping there was going to be that one.
Yeah, I've been scoping out for the last three days since they come and fill the lock on the door just to try to get in the house.
So, heads up.
So, just a heads up on that, man, because I don't want it to get any worse. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yep, you did, okay, that's... Just Stuart. Okay, so, one thing to discuss is this EMS logic. Barbara, I spoke about it briefly, I granted eyes about a little bit. Mary cocked me a little bit about what I understand is that this is an inventory management software that will work for fire and ambulance. It gives us the ability to make sure that anything that is time-sensitive and will expire can be replaced in a timely fashion. Equipment that...
Do what you guys gotta do, man. I trust you.
There's a record of it. It just keeps a constant level, a constant rate on what equipment we have. And as far as I understand it, this is an extremely steeply discounted rate. And service will be provided through ambulance and fire. And the...
Robbie's in charge.
Everybody will have access to it. And then, again, because Mary is on ambulance service and also on fire, she will be overseeing the duty. And the cost per year is seven hundred and twenty dollars. That gives us, how many units do you say there?
So, we have three. The two ambulances at the main, and then the fire truck has four. So, there are trucks and... It also keeps track of the lowest prices for the supplies out there. And so, instead of you spending two to three hours to go to all these different places and see where to get the lowest prices, these guys do it for us. And they have a lot more toll on these prices. So, I'm looking forward to possibly getting our supplies for the ambulance to a cheaper cost. When we first seen this demo, the rolling up directors, the cost was thirty dollars per unit. And I set up a demo with Cody and I and Mary just so they could see it. And I kept talking to the guy and telling him that, you know, he had to give it to us cheaper. I've been doing this for a lot of years, and so... And then he told us he'd give it to us for twenty dollars per unit. And then I said, "Well, we're not combined, so can we do it?"
All right, get him out of here, Robbie.
"We're logging under it, so the fire department can have their own logins and stuff." And he agreed to do that for me, as long as I didn't tell anybody about it, so.
Oops, we got zoned.
Yeah. So, we thought it was a really good idea. It will help us all, it will keep track of maintenance on all the vehicles. It will keep track of the guarantees we have.
We don't even know who works here.
Do a lot to help us with the maintenance and keep up our supplies and stuff.
There's no organizational chart, there's nothing. They won't provide it, my grandma asked by this company right here. That guy. He's a criminal, all of them are. They're all criminals.
No, I can vote, but I just shouldn't. Do we each have a...
No. Scott.
Maybe I have two.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion on that in a second.
I'll second.
A motion in a second to go ahead and go with EMS logic at seven hundred and twenty dollars on favor.
I buy it.
Vote Penny.
Thank you.
Half of that goes to the attorney.
We got the real EMS...
That mayor probably gets a few looks.
Seven hundred and sixteen and seventeen. That'll take Barbara and Jim on a bit of a trip. They'll start at the office of the medical examiner, and then go up to fever. It looks like it's only gonna be a one-night stay for them. Barbara's telling to me that she wants to keep the cost as low as possible. And so, I would like to secure a cheap estimate, probably around three hundred and change. I would like to ask for four hundred just in case anything increases. And I'm certain that we're not going to use that for much. Okay, make a motion. I'll make a motion, we give them to the EMS, rural EMS meeting on seven hundred and sixteen and seventeen, for a tentative cost of four hundred dollars. I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, just to go ahead with the rural EMS meeting at approximately four hundred dollars. On favor?
Aye.
It was easy's job.
Thank you. I already said if you can have...
Have to fight, have to fire Z C now. It's a hard guy.
Yeah, were you able to get your project up there back moving, or have they... Done?
Call them now, that's it.
More, let us know.
Good change.
Okay, good. Four of us will be going to the conference?
Oh, they get to go to a conference, how nice.
And we have voted that we would not be going to the conference.
Hope they're all going, hope they're not going. Hope they need another vote. They're not sure.
We motion we do not go to the conference, we do not have money for raises for the employees.
They've got all kinds of money.
I don't feel that we should go.
All kinds of money here. This guy, they're... It's got all kinds of money.
What makes you think there's no money in here for the conference?
Look at that. Look at that.
If there's money in there for the conference.
Look at that. They always have money for their things. See? Yeah. He doesn't remember.
Anyone?
It's a comedy act. I can't believe it.
Yes? You're on the going. I couldn't, I had a visual for it, it didn't connect. If you have money, you can talk to it at least.
That's the song, I don't know. Spend, spend, spend?
They have a motion in a second to not go to conference. On the favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Uh.
Both standing.
Look at how normally they would go, you know. They would be going.
There's eight thousand dollars in my budget for it, twenty five hundred dollars in, uh.
Now they don't get to go.
So when was this decided?
Jason.
So, okay, I have a question. So why?
Here we go, here we go.
The city treasurer does not need to go to conference.
Oh, he's been good going to conference.
He's a good.
Why, why are we paying for Jason to go to conference? Liz has to go as a city recorder. But why are we paying for Jason to go to conference?
Cause that's his buddy.
It's, uh. It's a good place for him to be. And everyone else, uh, it's been good in the past.
Can you believe these people?
We, we already made a motion, we have.
Can you believe these people? I can't believe this. What a joke.
I don't know why we keep doing that. Once we make a motion, why do we keep coming back and changing the decision?
And when was it ever brought before council that people were going to go to council?
That's right now.
But you, we just got to telling this that four people were going, so it was already decided.
Well, you said you were going. Liz says she's going, Tommy says she isn't going, that leaves four of us, automatic.
I wasn't going because we voted that nobody was.
That was a vote during budget hearing. Not, not during the meeting like this.
And it was not brought up before, after that?
Look at that.
Can't get that through, but that's tonight.
Look at that.
So that's okay.
That's okay. They're all gonna do, they're gonna do what they wanna, I bet you they all go.
Probably accomplish it, that, so forget about and.
Uh, just forget it.
Uh, old business, Mike?
Yeah, question, old business?
Yeah, Mike?
Name's a charmer, call me by name. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, two weeks ago, I guess, I asked about the rising one, the fire particles, anybody asked about?
I've been with Rocky Mountain on that, so let's see what happens here.
But you've talked.
Yeah, I have.
Okay. Also, that same week, uh. Grant can help me out with this. There was a, uh, project. Inviting to do the heart break. Uh, I haven't seen that. Yeah, I just, here, is that still on or?
You are.
It's too take a while to start, how do you feel, Grant?
That's, we're still, we just gotta plan around.
Kind of real busy.
Gotta plan a date, because we're all just gonna show up and do it.
He's too busy targeting residents.
Wow, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So. Dude, can you stop? Like, seriously, no one can hear that here while you're sitting there yapping your.
Sorry, talking to me?
Yes, I'm talking to you, Jason, and Mr. East.
Here you are, sir. Anything else you'd like to say?
It's not just him, we can't hear.
Anything else you'd like to say?
I couldn't hear him, I'm shit right here.
Would you like to say something to?
In private, please.
I'm sorry?
Okay, no more, no more talking to the audience, we're being, we're.
In private, please.
Our security to take people out here. So let's, let's keep the audience completely quiet unless directed by the mayor.
So, under oath business, that reminder you and Mike talked about that, um, I did have a couple of people come to me about dead fall on the walking trail. And I talked to Cody and then it ran and then escaped. So. Um. We need to go up and check on all the dead falls they say is on the walking trail.
We, we drove down that very next day and there was a couple of branches and that was it.
Okay, payables. I have one question. Yeah, how much did the reservoir come up?
Uh, four and a half inches.
Four and a half? We're losing four and a half.
But I want to get.
The bitches always wanna fight.
It's just gonna get warm again, people are gonna use the water, so we still need to regulate it and watch it.
Okay, payables.
I have a question, so. These roof.
I just have matches about that stall.
I thought we had voted long time ago over this.
These are people that have relationships over homes.
Okay, but. Why are we still giving out their deposits that they came to be able to have water? And some of these are quite. A few hundred dollars, so.
We don't hold any deposit on the account when they found a current bill, so if they sell a house, everybody can deposit. And that's.
I remember years ago. I think that's something we need to bring up and, um.
It's Bob Marjanis right here, another tough guy here.
Okay. And other than that, I make a motion that would take pickles.
On second. I have a motion in a second completed, payables, all in favor?
All paying themselves.
Both pending. And I will make a motion that we adjourn tonight, please. Yeah, a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
I will second that.
I had my hand up for all the meetings, but I got skipped past and went to payables. But, um, since Bradley Adams wasn't allowed to be speak on the agenda tonight, can we add him to the next meeting's agenda, please?
Can, can we bring on a, a student?
He's not campaigning. He's not, he's bringing up a proposal.
Idea.
It was just an idea, it has nothing to do with campaigning. People are assuming it's campaigning.
Eighteen hundred.
Good Lord, offering up the idea.
That's a thin line right there.
Offering up the idea, Ben. I'd like to be on the.
So you need to submit that, hold up your general ideas.
Okay, why is he never going?
It's a good show though, tell you that.
Well, the city council, they're, they have automatic rights for, if you're not on the city council, whether or not your items were at the meeting is, uh, by the discretion of your chairman of the city council, the mayor.
If you don't think so, then you need to not attend that. If you could ask any general question.
Well, it's not a general question, it's an idea that I have. It was an idea that I wanted to propose before that.
There goes the attorney skipping out quick.
Yeah, I'll put it in line.
He's skipping out, look. That was the attorney. He's out there fast.
So all these people who have been on the agenda and have spoken have done it. I did.
Well, maybe all they did was call, right?
But you need to be stopped to.
We still have a motion, Mike, we have, we still have a motion.
Oh, I was just gonna say that when I applied for my business license, I had to come up in front of council and I did have to get on the agenda and wait two weeks, um, when I proposed my business.
There you go. Fifteen hundred, about two thousand altogether. There's the city attorney, he's the criminal. This guy right here, we're gonna follow him out. I want my aunt, grandma's answered. Stark outside now. It's all right. This guy cried over here, this guy, rant knee. He's a scumbag crybaby. He's the one who targets, uh, residents and family members, this clown, the guy that rammed his mouth. Oh, they couldn't hear, oh, it's bad. They couldn't hear. Bunch of crybabies. Fucking crybabies. He knows what's coming. Fame, infamy. 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 Yep, they're all family members. That's what they do to each other. This guy's wife assaulted my neighbors.
Hey.
This guy.
Suggestion.
Suggestion to me?
Yeah, you could have.
What kind of suggestion do you have?
Just a simple suggestion.
What would? Why would you tell me to do that, sir? Are you asking me or telling me?
No, I'm just asking.
You're asking me. Oh, it's a suggestion. So you're not even asking me, you're suggesting it.
That's, that's protocol when the national anthem or pledges.
Okay, you keep your protocol to yourself then, sir, how about that? Keep your protocol to yourself, scumbag.
Hello, Jason, go on a history.
Hello, Mike?
Yeah.
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good too.
Good. He's stumbling, he's all right? Gotta watch him, gotta make sure he's okay. Anything else you'd like to say to me? Good. Wait for what? The hell you wait for? Jurassic?
You are a Whitesnake fan, aren't you?
Get the hell out of here, slippin' scumbag. Why would you say that to me?
You just look.
You don't like Debbie Gibson? You don't like Debbie Gibson?
But I know you like Debbie Gibson, I can tell.
Who doesn't?
She was your style.
Who doesn't?
I was right.
Were, were you a teenager back then?
I was a teenager a long time ago, that's for sure. When were you a teenager?
No, I'm asking you.
Well, I'm asking you.
We're the same age, I'm sure.
Is that right?
I've already looked you up, like you've done to me.
How about that?
Correct.
Well, that's cool.
Anything else you'd like to say, Hal pint?
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. You're not a city worker, I don't give a shit about you.
Yeah, you're a PR too, you're a piece of shit.
Thanks.
Rudy, Rudy.
You know what, you're a piece of shit. I've never.
Rudy?
But you're a fucking idiot.
Rudy, Rudy, what was your last name, sir?
My name is Rudy Paul Blackburn.
Very good, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
You, you wanna talk the talk, why don't you go walk the walk? Let's go walk the walk, bud.
Nice to meet you.
You know, cause you need it. And you know what, I would be the guy to do it.
Careful.
I'm watching you.
You're, you're gonna be the guy to do what? Say that again, sir? Say that again. Jesse, what is he saying, this man? Explain that to me. Explain what this man's saying to me.
You're an idiot.
No, we're gonna. That's what you're explaining, say it again. What was your name, sir?
Put your head on your ass and do your job.
What do you? I wanted to find out who he was.
Well, you know what? You'll find out eventually.
Come on, come on and find out. Where, where are you going now? Where's he going now? Where are you going now? Uh, you let the attorney get away? What a scumbag, huh? That's all right, tough guy. You don't, you don't scare me, Hal pint. None of you guys scare me. None of you guys scare me, get that through your fucking head. Where's my grammar request, sir?
Enjoy your Whitesnake.
Where's my gram?
Are you gonna listen to Warrant and Whitesnake?
Why are you not listening to, why, fill it out my grammar request?
Are you gonna listen to Debbie?
You know, I have you on camera, not putting your seatbelt on last time. Are you gonna get a ticket for that?
I don't know.
Well, now are you gonna get a ticket for that?
I'm not the cop.
You're not, exactly, see. I'm what?
Go enjoy your Whitesnake, Cass.
There's the criminal attorney, there he goes. Look, all the ones. Look at, big bunch of clowns, all of them. Run their mouth about nothing. It's unbelievable, these people. That's okay, well, expose them all, every one of them, including Mr. Goofball here. All these guys. All of them. Bunch of criminals, thanks, brother. Thanks for coming in, you guys. What a sick display. Sick display of criminality. There's the mayor. All of them. Bunch of criminals, all of them. Putting Mr. Mayor here. We're gonna make them all infamous. Every one of them, that's why they're all getting worried, I would be too. I would be too. Infamous. All of them, infamous. We're gonna make them all famous. That's how it works. This guy knows what's about to happen. What are you talking to me?
You're the only one standing here.
What the fuck would I go ride with you for? Bunch of criminals. The fuck would I do that for? Yeah, 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 we'll see about that, Mr. Avery. Yeah, you said bring it on, you know what's about to happen, sir. You got it, brother. You got it, brother. I got no problem with it. You, you know better than that. You know better than that now, don't you, tough guy? All of ya.
How would I know better?
You, you know, your attorney just left. He just left. Cause he's a criminal. Forty-two, uh, twenty, twenty grammar requests not answered by the criminals. Twenty.
You're fucking right, dude.
Twenty.
What's up, Einstein? God, you know.
Twenty.
Where did you go? Nateart School?
Exactly.
You know a lot of stuff, man.
Exactly, yeah.
You gonna make me famous on Facebook?
I don't do Facebook, sorry.
Oh, you don't do nothing.
I don't do Facebook, sorry. That guy does Facebook.
Can I give you an example?
That guy does Facebook.
You know what you can do? Shut your high hole trap, jump in your ride and drive away.
Aw, thanks, Hal pint, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
Oh, no, you're worth my time.
I appreciate it.
We'll see you later.
I, no, we're, we're good to go, bro. We're good to go, bro. You don't faze me, little man. None of you people do, you don't faze me. None of these, you don't faze me, bro. I'm not fazed by your scumbag ass, dude. I'm not fazed by you. Not fazed by you, bro. None. None of you scumbags, none of you, get that through your fucking head. None of you. None of ya. None of you. None of the cops, none of them. None of you clowns scare me, none of ya. Get that through your fucking heads. All of ya. But we're gonna make all of you famous, though. Every one of you people. Get that through your heads. Half pint. Thanks for tuning in, everybody. Everybody gets heated for no reason when they're filmed and they're on camera. Bunch of criminals. I've called you criminals for months, I'll call you a criminal for more months. That's how it works, criminal. Fuck you. Fuck you. You're crying in a city hall meeting. What are you, what a crybaby, dude. You're a crybaby. Oh, you're a crybaby. You know why? The world's gonna know you, that's why. Oh, they will, he will know you now, sir. We gonna make you famous, bro, you know that. Those are the rules. Those are the rules. Get his aut, get his autograph, quick. Quick, get that scumbag's autograph, quick. Greg, look, he's actually signed it, I think.
There you go.
Wow. She must be a, one, is she a Satanist too? Holy shit. Wow.
Oh my God, call the cops, I almost ran your puss ass over. Oh my God, you're dead. I almost ran you over. There's something about it, bud.
P O six, three Y K, look there, there it is. See? They all gonna scatter in the end. They all will scatter in the end, every one of them. They all will scatter in the end. Thanks for tuning in, everybody. They know, now they know other people are here and running. Now, I'd be worried too. I would be worried too, you criminals. I would be worried too. There you go, there it is, there's. There you go. There it is. There's the proof right there, see? Thank you, sir. My head moderator. There we go. But this is what they do. They cry a bitch about dumbass shit and then come out here and, and ask for more money to everybody. That's what they do. And never do shit for nobody. And some of the residents sit there and cry and shit. It's okay. We're all gonna make them famous. Every one of them. Say hello real quick to everybody. Hey, you guys, thanks. Thanks for coming into the livestream, guys. I appreciate it. Get a little light here. And all these little half pints and shit. They wanna run their mouth. It's crazy. They wanna cry about shit. They're still over there. Look. People are still crying about shit. Thanks for tuning in, everybody, though. Thanks, everybody that came in. Let me, let me say hello to everybody quick. Outta gone. Dixie, thanks Dixie. Porter Ferb, thank you, brother. Thanks for coming in, man. Hey, Jug. Good to see you. Thank you. Dry day. Hey, Rami. Hey, I'll, I'll send you that email. Thank you, brother. I appreciate it. All you guys. Hey, thanks for coming in, guys. I appreciate it. There's another one. Another one bites the dust, these criminals. There it is. See you next time.